I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for August 26, 2020. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands under God, in the name of justice, law, and justice.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Present.
Paul Panzik?
Here.
Wayne Pandinos?
Present.
Michael Schilling?
Here.
Gerald Swatz?
Here.
Craig Phillips?
Here.
David Westland?
Present.
And Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay. We have a quorum, so we will move on to number five, which is a discussion regarding the current state and capacity of our water facility and our infrastructure needs. I'd like to thank Hassan Associates for being here this evening. We also have our Water and Public Works employees, directors, and our waterman here. So I'd like to thank the Bobs for being here this evening as well. If we could start with Hassan Associates.
Good evening. I'm Tim Haas, the owner of Hassan Associates. And as you know, Scott was here for the redevelopment commission meeting. We have two other engineers on, one via Zoom, Ken Kraus is in the upper right corner, and Jim Mauer is the phone without a face. Jim would have been here at this meeting if he had been around, but he's actually, I think, somewhere in Nebraska right now. So I apologize for him not being able to be here. Jim is our expert at, you know, water and wastewater treatment and systems, and he's been heavily involved. So he's here to help talk about this with answer questions. We, Hassan Associates, have been working with the town representatives for quite a while, but including on the water system. The town's been making improvements along the way over the years. Some of the recent things that have been going on are in relation to finding sites for additional water wells. That's resulted in the location of a well in the Gates East subdivision, well number eight. There's a potential for another well over there, well number nine, potentially in that same area. Peerless Midwest has been working with the town and us on that study, finding additional sources of water. The town's wells are somewhere in the range of 200 feet deep. They vary, but about 200 feet deep. And there's five wells. Finding water is not as straightforward, maybe, as some people might expect, but Peerless is an expert company at finding and drilling wells, finding water and drilling wells. So, for instance, the well number eight in Gates East has, it's actually in the ground. It's been tested, and it produces somewhere in the range of 1,000 or 1,500 gallons a minute. So that project is actually partially constructed, and once an easement, protective easement is obtained from the property owner and recorded, that easement is recorded, we're ready to submit a permit to IDEM, Indiana Department of Environmental Management. Their approval is necessary before the town can activate that well. So, you know, that project is quite a ways along, ready, just, we need to get a recorded easement so that the construction permit from the state can be obtained. In addition to that, there's been some other areas looked at for sources of water. They, Peerless has had some trouble in some areas of town, but they're, they think that in the area of the Gates is a good spot, good aquifers. And I know they found one other area that's pretty promising. Jim, can you hear me, Jim Mauer?
Yes, I can.
Where's that other location?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. They were thinking about finding another well site in the vicinity of wells three, four, and five.
Oh, that's right, yeah. Over by the shrine?
Yes.
So they've narrowed down some areas where they think there's promising aquifers, aquifers, I mean, and so that's been ongoing. In addition to that, we've looked at some options that are worth looking into in detail to perhaps shore up the water distribution system. The SCADA system that the town is in the process of implementing, I think, will help a lot in that through the SCADA system, the towns will be able to keep an eye on the water level and the different storage tanks. And one of the issues that's happened in the past during peak demands is the storage tanks, I think, sometimes overflow. There's some issues that can be solved with better controls on the storage tanks to take more advantage of the tank's storage capacity while at the same time not fighting the flow of water through the system, through some automatic controls that will be able to be implemented with the use of SCADA system. That's something that's an ongoing project. I think the town has been looking into and working on that for this whole year, and that project's moving forward. Jim, do you have any other things to add about the water system?
Well, I know the concerns are, do we need more water supply? Do we need more water storage? Or do we need more water distribution mains? And our study, a study that we have been working on a proposal for would look at all of those. Whatever you do, you need the mains. If you're going to put in additional storage or additional wells, you need the water mains to receive the water. So the water mains can come first. They have to be done, and they would really prolong the need for storage or water supply. If you could put in the mains to better distribute the water throughout the town, that's definitely the first thing to do. But a study should be done so that you do it the right way, so you know what your ultimate plan is. And then the water mains should come first, and they should get you through for a while until your population grows to where you've got to have more water supply or more storage. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
So there's, we have, oh, yeah, that's, I think Mr. Veloi has perhaps even obtained permission from IDOM to run a couple of the pump wells that are close to each other, run them simultaneously, whereas that hasn't been allowed in the past. And so that's, is it still only during emergency situations?
As of right now, yes.
As of right now? But I think there's hope that with the right submittal to IDOM, that that could be turned into a permanent and not just an emergency situation, where those two wells could run simultaneously?
Depending on IDOM's answer, yes.
Yeah. So it's, that's something that's in progress to try to get that approval from IDOM for running wells, what are those, three and five simultaneously?
Six and seven.
Oh, six and seven, okay. So there's a study that we're just about ready to kick off with the town. We've had an initial meeting, I think it was about three or so weeks ago, with representatives of the town to undertake a system capacity improvement study, and that study, which would take about two and a half months to complete. Things like the water, the well water supply and treatment volumes for the past 12 months would be analyzed, water purchase volumes from Sherrville for the past 12 months, fire hydrant flushing rates, I think that's done semi-regularly, and that data's available, updated Wasp Water Distribution System map. And then looking at, taking all that information and making analysis of what's needed then, both from, you know, the capacity of the wells, the system, the shortcomings in the distribution system. We have some ideas on where some of those are now, but this would be used to verify those ideas. And then looking at storage and how the storage. Right now, I think your storage and your capacity meet IDOM's requirements, but IDOM's requirements do not prevent the town from asking for, you know, banning watering lawns during peak use. So if, you know, I think that question has been asked, and the town is within IDOM's requirements now, both in capacity and storage. But again, IDOM does not look on banning lawn watering as something that's acceptable to them. So maybe the town, if you'd like, you know, would like to increase the capacity where that isn't an issue in the future.
What would increase capacity or increase storage, or both, or what's recommended? Or you want to do your study before that?
Yeah, well, the study has to be done, but what we see right now, really, one of the main issues is not storage or well capacity. It's the transmission system and moving the water around more efficiently to the locations that really need it during peak demand. You know, that's where the SCADA system will help with that. In addition to, you know, some new water mains in some locations that I think we've at least preliminarily discussed with some of the representatives, like, for instance, perhaps on 231 from the Gates area over to Wicker Ave. And there's a few other locations where we think it would make a significant difference if there were better way to move the water through the system.
So just to recap then, so your study will be forthcoming, but as far as some of the improvement areas would be additional wells, which we're addressing with number eight, right?
Yes.
Upgrading the SCADA system, which I think we already started the engineering on that, correct?
Right, and I think the report that Mr. Haas is talking about is already being, it might already be done. I think when we had a meeting at the Public Safety Building, we were talking about the lines, the water mains going to 41 with Jim Mauer. So I think that, is that not right, Bob?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so I think that's already almost done, if not done.
Well, it's, I'm not sure what, if there's something I'm not aware of, but I don't think we've finished the study. We were-
You're still working on it, I think.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
We were getting a place to have the study done.
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
Doing preliminary work, then?
Yes.
Okay. But you're-
The proposal, we need authorization to do that study. So we're about to submit a proposal for your review and approval so we can start the study.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
So preliminary, so you've basically done a preliminary study up to the point of preparing a proposal for us to expand the system, or improve the system, I should say. So just to summarize, I'm trying to take away the important points here. As you see it, we currently have enough water and enough storage, but we just can't move it around. And I know that the SCADA system's already in the, that one's already in the works. That we're doing regardless, right? So, you know, that began at the beginning of this year, and it's going to be incorporated into the, a bond we're going to do at the water utility. But now you're going to recommend some main improvements, which is going to tremendously help to get the water, because I know I did talk to Mr. Veloi, and he said, well, there's a lot of water up in the tanks, it's just a matter of having it in the right tank or at the right time, but we had adequate storage. So I think we all look forward to the proposal and a full report, because we would not only like to make it work better now, but also, you know, for the future. And as far as well, number eight, we actually have a request to approve more work towards completing that tonight. That'll come up later in our council meeting, a request to purchase to run the pipe virtually to the well site. So we're getting closer to bringing that online, but, so do I understand that? So, but right now, we meet IDOM approval, it's not an issue as far as capacity or storage?
In regards to well number eight?
Uh-
Or in general?
In general.
In general, no, I think that you meet, the town meets IDOM's requirement for capacity and storage. But IDOM's approval for well number eight, you know, that hasn't been-
That's a separate, yeah. Once we get the, and that, and just for the public, so I'm the liaison to the plant commission, and that subdivision has primary plat approval, and certain portions are coming in for secondary approval. When that portion comes in for secondary approval, we will, the town will gain full rights and ownership to that land, and at that time, finish out the wellhouse and get the approval, finish the wellhouse and connect it.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Good, good. And the study, as you mentioned, Mr. Panzik, the study will look at both the current situation and the immediate needs, as well as the fully developed system, the fully, when the town is fully developed.
Good, because, I mean, previous to January 1st, all that was really looked at was well number eight and nine, and there was, I don't think there was any studies to add the mains or bring the SCADA system online. And Wayne suggested the SCADA system right out of the gate. And now engaging you for this service, we're going to get the comprehensive picture. If we're going to do it, do it right, you know, get everything done, so.
And then the information, you know, regarding the fully developed, look at what's going to be necessary, that will help also with your planning, and then also your approval of subdivisions and new developments, in understanding what part perhaps developers need to play in paying for more than just the mains that serve their proposed development.
Okay. And I'll just end by saying, we're, most are aware we're doing a five-year plan right now, so it'll be really important for us to get that report as soon as possible and incorporate into the long-term plan we're building, so we know what it'll cost and how we're going to pay for it and fit it in there. So, sooner the better. We look forward to that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for us? Then I'd like to go to our-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry. This question isn't for Haas, but are you about to move off this item?
No. I was going to move over to our, to Bob, to our-
Okay.
To our water guys.
Very good, thanks.
Bob Veloi, Bob Davis, Public Works. So, yeah, we had some extreme heat and created extra watering needs. We have implemented a watering ban. If you could share with us how we got to this point and what the remedy's going to be? Could you do that, speaker right there? Well, I just kind of like to know the situation.
You just want an example of what's taking place.
Yes.
Not a problem. So what happens, I'll state my name, Bob Veloi, I work for the town of St. John.
He's the waterman.
Thank you.
I'm the waterman, the original waterman.
You're a wannabe waterman.
But anyways, so Monday morning, our tower's dropped. Hack Street Tower is our control tower. That tells the pumps when to turn on and when to turn off. So that hits a certain level, pumps turn on. We have three pumps at Monex, we have two at the Gates. The three at Monex were already running. Hack Street's dropping, dropping, dropping. The Gates drops very slow because it's real close to that treatment plant. Kill Kenny's Way Out West, it drops as well. Not as fast as Hack. Hack only has 500,000 gallons. Those are million gallons. What happened was, is we got down to roughly, say, around five, six feet, and that's a lot of water that's out in the system. So before that happens, I go out there and I bypass the Gates Tower. The water doesn't go in the Gates Tower, it goes directly this way towards Hack Street, fills Hack Street faster in case there is a fire or any other issues, in order to have that under control. And then after, say, around noon, it gets to about where it filled, and the pumps shut off, they rest, and within another couple hours, they do it again. But not as drastic as Monday mornings or Tuesday. It's always in the morning when the sprinkler systems kick on. So the only thing that I suggest is perhaps, odds even, sprinkle ban, whatever the council And that pretty much sums it up.
Well, that's kind of about what happened about a month and a half ago.
Correct.
And we had the same questions, same scenario almost.
Correct.
And then we put this in our water bills. So then I think that worked, and now it got away from everybody, and they maybe forgot. But there was no shortage.
No, there was not a shortage.
We have the water, it just-
We just drain real fast, and it's in the mornings.
And I think that now you're going to do some manual maneuvers with that one valve in the Gates?
I would like to, yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
But you don't want to do too much of that, because you, eventually you want to replace that valve.
Within-
So you don't have to manually do that, and that'll work a whole lot better.
Correct.
And that has to be done around midnight or two in the morning, or whenever-
I would say around 4:00 AM is when, yeah, we-
Right, okay.
Someone should be out there closing it, yeah.
So when I got a call that said we had a water condition or water issue that required us to maybe put a ban in place, I was a little bit concerned about that, because, yeah, that's what I've got. I don't know the water situation, I don't know the water issues, so I depend on, you know, I depend on you, I depend on Wayne to, you know, kind of guide us along. So that's why we went with the water ban. We did every other, even and odd, like Wayne said, back in July, but that wasn't doing the trick anymore, so I think we did have to take that a step further. Are you recommending, then, that we could go back to odd and even? Is that what you just-
I would recommend it.
Okay.
I mean, I think we're okay, but with this hot water and the drought, I was contacted today by a gentleman from IDOM, and he's with the drought division.
Okay.
And the state of Indiana is under a drought, as you can all tell. We would, pretty much were the first case out of Lake County, Indiana, but the only ones that they heard of.
Mm-hmm.
So, yes, the state's in a drought.
Okay.
Was it true that Sherrville had experienced something similar Monday morning? They were kind of sounding alarms on their side as well?
Yes, yes. Sherrville, I spoke to the operator up there, and he told me that there's a chance that he's going to have to cut us off from 1.5 million gallons a day, which helps tremendously because it gives our wells rest and the aquifers regenerate. When he said that, that's when I contacted Wayne and told him that there's a very good chance that Sherrville might cut us off.
So it's, yeah, and that's why we agreed to put a sprinkler ban on. I'd rather have a little bit of brown grass and be extraordinarily conservative, even though we probably could have weathered it just fine, but rather be extraordinarily conservative and keep the reserves in the tanks and et cetera. So, and as we look into the, we've already been looking into the long-term solutions, that's already underway.
Yes.
So, and once this weather clears, it'll give us quite a bit of time to get another well online over the winter and-
Right.
And some improvements in, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
So I appreciate you sounding the alarm for us, because I would rather go to a more restrictive ban on eliminating watering grass and things like that than not have enough water to, for public safety, put it that way. So I thank you for your work there.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bob?
Well, thank you, Bob.
You're welcome.
You do a great job out there.
Thanks, buddy.
You know, one thing, you know, you look at Monday morning, okay, sprinkler systems hook up, people don't shower on Sundays, they wait till Monday, you got an extra, everybody wants to-
Speak for yourself, Mike.
-look good for Monday and going to school. And that was just, that same case that happened a month ago was on a Monday as well, you know.
Yep.
So Bob, as an operator, has to tell everybody, and he'll tell the right people, so we all know. We can't just wait, hey, I got a big problem, we don't have no water. I mean, it's not going to be that way, but he has to let us know, and that's what I did with Jerry.
Let him know.
So we know, and Bob takes a part in that, too.
Bob knows right away.
Right, yeah. He probably gets the first phone call. But both you guys do a good job, you keep us informed. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know I took a shower Monday.
Are they going to get you a cot or a bed out at the, at the valve?
So then Bob Davis, our Public Works Director, there was some talk about doing upgrades to some of the mains, and I think you brought some of that to our attention earlier. I think you've got a, kind of got a plan in place for upgrading some of our mains as well?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments you want to make with?
I'd just like to say that ban might be a strong word. We do have water, but we always want to make sure we have enough for park protection and for everybody to reuse. That's why we're sprinkling, and that's why we always put sprinklers first. It's really not a necessity, excuse me, necessity. A lot of times, you see them running, it's raining out, parks run down the street, just overwatering. So again, there's water, we got water in the system, we just want to be on the safe side.
Okay.
And you might want to make mention, Jerry, that people that have moved in that have new sod, we're not telling you don't water your sod, water it enough, you're not going to lose it. I know they got a lot of money tied up in sod and landscaping, so that's allowable, more so than somebody that has a lawn that's already established. We understand there's a big expense there, so I think we can throw that in there, that's okay for them.
I would concur. I know when Lowell has done a sprinkler ban before, they make an exception for new landscaping. I agree.
And somebody told me today that the sod, you don't want to water it too much, you want the root system to go down deeper and get a better hold, and when it goes dormant, it's better. So if you saturate the lawn too much, when you walk in, you squish, squish, that's not good on new sod. So if they wa, if everybody watches what they're doing and conserve a little bit, I think everything's going to be a lot better. It's like going to a stop sign, a four-way stop, who's going to go first? You just have to have a little courtesy, and I'm not going to water today. That works out, so.
Well, I know we don't have an ordinance in place that would require a ban. So everything that we've done up to this point has kind of been voluntary, we asked for compliance from the town. And so, you know, if we went to something like that, in order for us to maybe make a requirement, we'd actually have to have an ordinance in place.
Right, and that's coming.
Yeah, I think we probably should look at that, because otherwise it's impossible to enforce anything.
Sort of like the parking on the street ordinance during the snowplow season. So, yeah, we need to enforce it, we don't want to have to, we don't want to have to enforce it, we'd rather just hang a tag on your door, warning, say, hey, please, you know, work within it.
Okay, and then I had a question for our attorney. Dave, there were some comments about our ability, or should we be putting a moratorium on building because of our lack of capacity for water or situations like that, or even the ordinance? Could you address either of those for us?
Sure. So you can't put a moratorium on building permits. If you think about the process, first, before you got a vacant piece of property, it gets subdivided. And when it goes through subdivision approval, when the plant commission approves that subdivision with the help of the town engineer, they're certifying that we have services to service that subdivision. So if a new residential subdivision would come online, they'd go through that subdivision approval, and at that point, your engineer would say, yeah, the drainage is okay, we have, you know, the adequate roads are being proposed, and we, and part of that is, is that we have water to service, you know, those new buildings. That's the time to analyze whether or not, you know, your water system is adequate for what's being proposed. By the time they come in for a building permit, which is way down the line, you've kind of, you've already certified that we're adequate, and from what the engineer is saying, we do have adequate water. So the time to analyze it is at the plant commission level with the subdivision approval process, not, you know, months or sometimes years later when there's a building permit.
Okay. And as far as an ordinance goes, what your- And then as far as an ordinance goes, what's your ideas or recommendations there?
You know, because it kind of, because of the schedule of council meetings and the emergency nature of like a drought kind of happening, if you were going to consider an ordinance for, you know, a partial or total, and I don't want to use the word ban, but prohibition against outdoor water use, you know, I would suggest that, and because it doesn't, most of the time it's not going to last that long, that you give thought to giving the executive the authority to declare an emergency for a short period of time, like two weeks, and that if it had to be extended, then that would have to be done by the vote of the full council, but that you give some authority to the executive that if, hey, if he gets the call, that, you know, we've got this drought situation and it's dire, that we need to act immediately, then the executive could do that. Theoretically, you'd have another council meeting coming up soon so that the council then could consider whether to extend it or have it expire, and that you give that, the executive, that short window to declare an emergency if an emergency exists. And really, you know, you could do it as a voluntary thing with the emergency order, but most of the time, if there's not some sort of penalty provision, it doesn't really work out that well. So, you know, my suggestion would be that you decide on some sort of penalty for violating, if the executive order went in place, and then if somebody violated it. And I would suggest, you know, the residents are first warned, right? Like, you wouldn't be rushing out to write tickets for violating the ordinance. You would warn them after a series of warnings, they still don't comply just because they don't want to, then you would have the option at least to impose a fine.
Okay. So something we can think about then. I don't think we need to do anything like that. Now, I think this, I think our town folk will comply if they understand that there's a need and a concern. So I think we can leave it at that for now. If you guys are okay with that? Mike, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. Any other questions for any of the gentlemen? Ken Kraus, you have anything to add? I see you're over there. I see you.
Yeah, you know, we're still working on the gate subdivision, as Paul said, as they come in in phases for secondary plats. It's, you know, it's going to be a couple-year process to get them all in.
Okay. And Ken, just for the record, Ken Kraus is from Haas Engineering as well, so spends a lot of time in town, working closely with us. Craig, any comments, questions?
No, just if you, you know, I just want to be clear about what guidance I'm getting from the council as far as what to put on, you know, out for social media and the website and that sort of thing. As it stands right now, we've done the slips in the past. We can do that again in the next water bill if the timing is right based on this event.
Beth, when are the next water bills coming out?
Too late.
It might be too late for this, too late for this next one, so, you know.
We'll just push it on social media?
We'll push it on social media, but right now, as it's worded, we can change that wording, you know, based on the conversation we've had with Bob Beloys and others tonight. I just, you know, just need to get some guidance from you guys about how you want to word that exactly, you know.
No problem.
I haven't used the word, I haven't used the word ban.
Restriction?
We've asked people not to water, is basically what we've done, and so, yeah, the word ban came from somewhere else. I'm not sure where that came from, so.
All right. So the recommendation from Bob was to go to evens and odds, back to where they were?
Back to that system, okay. So we can put that same note back on the website and social media, take care of that immediately.
You're good with that?
Yeah.
Mike, good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Keep us posted, Bob. Yep, thank you.
Any final comments from Haas?
In case you haven't already thought about it, maybe allow watering or promote watering at off-peak hours. I understand maybe that that's not the best for the lawn, the health of lawn, but if the problem is, you know, everybody's watering, obviously, the domestic use with showers and, you know, things like that, the peak is typically in the morning for a residential community.
Okay.
You know, that peak can change if you have a lot of industry or something like that, but I don't think that's really applicable here. But, so if the peak is in the morning for water usage of people, maybe if you ask people to water at different times of day, you know, other than the peak use period, that could help.
Okay. So what would you suggest, would you suggest like a late afternoon?
Well, I'm not a real expert in lawns. I don't, I, but I understand people, you know, some people really, really are interested in, I think there are some guidelines about when is the best time to water, and probably early in the morning is probably, you know, likely the best, but, you know, so if you water maybe at, you know, 3:00 in the afternoon or even in the evening, you know, maybe even in the night. Maybe you end up with, you know, mushrooms or something in the lawn that isn't, you know, you don't want, but, you know, at least the lawn's alive and it's not causing the problem when, you know, at off-peak hours of water use.
Do you know when our peaks are?
In the morning.
In the morning, okay.
When everybody showers.
Right about 4:00 in the morning?
So don't water while I'm trying to shower?
That's the unfortunate thing, you know, the lawn irrigation companies and the landscapers, you know, they recommend people to sprinkle at 2:00 in the morning. Well, then that starts your decline. Now you've got all the sprinkler systems coming on from, you know, 2:00 and 4:00 in the morning, and then once that's done and depleted part of your system, then everybody wakes up and takes a shower, and it continues to go down even lower, and then once they're all off to work and school, then you can see it climb back up, you know.
Okay, so if we go back to.
Yes, going back to Tim's recommendation, yeah, having to sprinkle a little at night.
Well, so if we go back to an odd and even situation, which is easy enough to explain, in the past, Bob V., does, did that work for us? Were the levels that we got down to?
We've done it in this project recently.
Recently, yeah. That worked out, okay. And so if we, if we do something similar to that, then were the levels similar in terms of what we got down to last time versus this time? Okay, so if we go back to that, then that seems pretty straightforward. People can understand that it's relatable because it's related to odd versus even, you know. All they have to know is odd or even, hopefully.
Okay.
The other peak time in the water system is Super Bowl Sunday at halftime.
Well, we'll flush that one away.
Yeah.
Tim, thank you for being with us this evening.
Thank you.
Bob Davis, thank you. Bob Beloys, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, gentlemen, for the good work.
If I could ask you gentlemen to just hang around for a little bit till we get through public comment, because if there's some questions that come up, I would like to address those. So if we have nothing else, I would like to move on. We're good? And we'll go to number six, public comment. Do we have some names signed up for public comment?
Dale. Dale Robert, 11990, Heron Lake Road. I would like to thank the Haas and Associates for their presentation. I thought it was excellent. One question I have on it, though, is the storage tanks. Don't they just more or less regulate the water pressure?
That is definitely one of their main, you know.
Their main function?
And also having the reserve in case of fire.
Yes, well, that's what I'm saying, but it does regulate the main, the water pressure because like, I think somebody was saying that one was full and one was half full. Well, the pressure was down from that one, that's all. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I just want to make people aware of that. That's what happens when the tanks go down.
Yeah, the pressure reduces when the tank is empty.
Okay, thank you, thank you. And that's the only question. I really hope the attorney could tell us a little bit more. If we're going to run short on water, we've got to stop building these houses. I don't care what anybody says, you're overdeveloping, you don't have the capacities.
Well, I, I, well, I'm sorry. I think what you're trying, when you say shortage, when the town manager said that, he said severe water shortage with no end in sight.
Yeah.
It was just not the right.
Those were not my words, those were the foreman's words. That's not what I said.
Okay, well, I just seen a thing.
Well, that's what, that's what, okay, okay, thank you.
What I'm saying is, is when myself or the town manager, if we give a comment, then everybody should know about it, and we should kind of, okay, is this right to say?
Yeah.
So whatever was said, that just started like putting gas on a fire.
Well, I understand that, too, and the social media is sometimes off-base.
Right.
And a lot of people don't get social media. It's the only thing I did see in social media that everybody could have got was the channel Fox News last night, okay? And that's the only time.
Right.
So, you know, I think if you're, I think, like he said, you have to go to the plant commission. It's the same thing with NIPSCO. Do they have enough grids to handle all these people that are in these developments? That's another thing that really concerns me, too. We've been losing power so much this year that I think NIPSCO's got something in with Generac to get them guys moving. So, you know, okay, that was my comment on that. And second comment is, Shops96, can anybody in this council tell me what the figures are right now, what they're spending? I see that you are on override number nine, I believe that was. What is the total spent over this 5 million that we started with? And is Mr. Boyer putting any money into that, too? I would like to know. And who is going in there? And you talk about water shortages, why do you need a car wash? Come on.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Do we have?
One more comment.
Okay.
My neighbor doesn't water her grass across the street from me for the last eight years. Can I take both turns?
No. I like your thinking.
I know we're waiting for some more numbers to come in, but do we have anything, anything even close?
Yes, I can actually answer that, and thanks, Beth, for providing information. Fund 407 is our TIF bond fund that was taken out for Shops96. Once we calculate, we've not spent the money yet, but I, you know, on paper, it's been spent for the latest contract we've awarded to Goff for the groundwork. We're actually still have $400,000 left to spend. What remains is the road connection construction, the asphalt and curbs. So we figured we could go as much as 2 million over. That's what I mentioned last, but, but, hang on, please. So last month, I said, that's what we were calculating, trying to figure the worst-case scenario, but looking at the numbers today, it looks like we're going to beat that and do better. So I only said the worst case, just, I'd rather say the worst and then overachieve. So with that contract with Goff coming in at a reasonable rate and the other cost savings we've done by reducing costs in that intersection, we're hoping not to go 2 million over. We're hoping to come a lot closer to zero. And so right now, there's still $400,000 to be spent, give or take, and depending on how much that road costs, we'll know exactly how far over. So that number should be determined within, well, by October, he said, we're going to get those bids, but possibly even sooner. So we're keeping an eye on that and doing everything we can to build the road right and do the improvements right and save money at the same time. And you heard some of that earlier tonight, we were talking about Joliet Street, you know, possibly doing some. So we're actually going to be spending some money to do improvements outside of that project that benefit the town. So, you know, so not all the money spent is actually within the Boyer development. A lot of it is actually outside of the boundaries of that development, like we were saying about the Joliet repaving that seriously needs to be done. So, but we'll keep updating you every month on the numbers. I have nothing to hide, I'd be happy to share them anytime.
Okay.
So right now, there's $400,000 in the bank still for that.
Next.
Adrian. Adrian Bugario. Adrian Bugario, 11747 West 90th Avenue. I requested from Gerald Swets and also Shillings, I send them some messages, sometimes very late, probably early in the morning, past midnight. And I told them, I said, I want all the charges against me within 10 days to be dropped because I haven't committed a crime. I was charged with a felony committed by St. John Police, Frizell and his gang, political judicial gang, and Bet Hernandez's political judicial gang, ever since you guys voted a good chief of police, Quetin out, and when she installed with her father, his gang member from 2003.
Let's stay with 2020.
I knew that is just a matter of time before I go to jail. And what happened last June, next day after I was evicted, I just look outside like I look right now. Nobody says nothing. I look in the back, Frizell's, I mean, Bet Hernandez's mother shouts at me. I didn't say nothing. Then he jumped in, Frizell. I am escorted out before the meeting even started. In the demonstration, there was in here that Black Lives Matter or whatever it is, I was by the church and I talked to some police officers over there, and Bet Hernandez was sitting next to Garden Hire. She turned like this to me and she made like this to me, like bye-bye. And that was what month was that? I think it was before June incident when I was, I was escorted out. I demand within 10 days, all false charges against me. I was beaten up like hell per her request. Look at her face, you know? And she was making like this, a demonstration by St. John Church, like this, like bye-bye, Adrian. She's a sarcastic lady, just like her father. I demand all charges dropped within 10 days, and I demand her resignation because you told me that you cannot fire her because she was elected. I didn't have nothing against her, and I didn't have nothing against her because of what happened between me and her father that put me in jail from June 20, 2001 to June 27, 2020. 19 years, he was running his gang. I want her out, the new chief that she's sworn in out, all the gang members in the St. John Police Department that were organized by her and by Frizell from Frizell's gang to be actually removed, the ones that put Quetin out, you know, because she took over the town running, you know? And I even told you something that I will not say nothing. You discuss this with a lawyer, whatever it is. I never committed a crime, I never been obnoxious, and I never had a DUI or anything like else from California to Massachusetts. I figure I put about 2.75 million miles, and that's, I think, to be conservative, since 59 years that I drive. I can count all my citations and all my accidents on five fingers, and I still have fingers left. I had nothing but trouble from the time I moved in here. I demand those guys to go. Chief Steve Flores, Fernandez, Hernandez, she has to go. And I don't want Frizell's gang anymore to intimidation and everything else. I was always polite talking in here, but to be thrown out twice or escorted out, whatever it is, and then last time, I didn't even have the word to say, the meeting hadn't started, you know? And then for you to say, Adrian, are you going to behave tonight? And you said the same thing, you know? And then Wenja, man, I know you guys for a long time, you are good people.
Okay, please wrap it up, Adrian.
Oh, everybody else can talk more, like the lady last time talked 45 minutes, only I am cut. I want all charges dropped and everything else. I told you whom I want out. In second, thirdly, I want $375,000 in damages for the brutal beating by Hernandez's and Frizell's gang. Thank you.
Who's next?
Jones.
Joan McInerney?
Everybody can talk except Adrian.
You can take the mask down for a few minutes. Joan McInerney, 9405 West 90th Lane. First, I'd like to say that social media plays such a big role in what we all experience today as a community. Lots of information, lots of misinformation floating around, and I would just like to say that, first off, I, as a matter of transparency, because that's what we're all trying to get to more of in St. John, and why there was such a big effort to remove and replace the past town council members. So first, I'd like to say thank you very much for the work that you have done in the town council meetings since you've been put in office in January. To have these kind of discussions like we've had this evening, transparency and bringing in experts to talk about what our current water situation is, the five-year plan that you guys talked about in several, I think it was in the month of June, just lots of things where you have been very transparent. Um, just lots of things where you have been very transparent. I've had the opportunity to talk one-on-one with many of you. And, right, there may be times that we're differ, that we have differ, different opinions on how some things should be handled. But overall, the discussion, the debates, and the work that you guys are doing is great, and I appreciate it. I think that there's a lot of things that you guys are doing in the background that I hope that, um, well, people will start to see that there has been a lot of work that you've been doing. And, and you have to, you have to sort of get the plan together so that you can lay the information out for, um, the residents. And I think the groundwork has been done for allowing for accurate and meaningful information to be shared. I think you and, and, and the town council and your teams that you have put together on the various commissions are working diligently to identify and, most importantly, to prioritize, um, some of the issues and issues that were, have been left before you from the previous town council that need to be addressed. These issues didn't materialize in eight months, that, and they're not gonna be resolved all in eight months. And so, I would just ask publicly for residents to be patient. I would ask for residents to certainly express their point of view. And I appreciate that when people are up here giving public comment, you're all looking at me. My very first public comment that I ever gave was because there were, you know, people talking, somebody twirling in their chair, and, and I just couldn't believe the disrespect that town council members were giving to residents that, um, were elected and that they were chosen to represent. So, um, I think there's lots of good things to come for St. John, and I appreciate the efforts that you guys are all putting forth. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joan.
Thank you.
Tony Duddy, 9136 West 107th Place.
Tony, before you begin.
Yes.
Do you have comments that you're making for the group, or are you just making your own individual comments?
Uh, I guess it's for the group.
Okay, so nobody else in the group is gonna speak then?
Correct.
Okay, go ahead.
So, last week, Marla Durney, Veronica Williams, and I presented our proposal for Heartland Park Family Gardens to the St. John Park Board. Thank you. We were very happy to receive their support and helpful suggestions regarding the location and management of the gardens. Tonight, we would like to thank you for your consideration and possible approval of Ordinance 1711, establishing the community garden system. As was mentioned in our proposal, we have received a very positive response from St. John residents who have expressed interest in participating in the garden. The garden will meet a specific need of the town by giving gardeners the opportunity to grow food, receive physical exercise, and expand their gardening knowledge through interactions with other gardeners. Again, we thank you for your thoughtful consideration of Ordinance 1711.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I'm hard of hearing, I have two hearing aids and the sound system in this room is terrible.
Can I get your name and address, please, for the record?
Okay, Kilman, northbound at 93rd Street. There is a stop sign, obviously. There should not be a left turn allowed. I was there the other day, I just, I've been there and waited a couple times, but I timed it, I was there for four minutes and 18 seconds. There's, people are timid, people are inconsiderate, they don't let people turn, but it's just, should not be allowed left turns there. And for everyone's information, in two days, the 27th, there's gonna be called a double moon in the southern sky. Mars and the moon are gonna be next to each other, it's gonna be something that hasn't occurred in over 100 years and won't occur again for another 200 years, I think. Something for someone to look at, kids should know.
Um, you live in, can I have your address?
Pardon me?
Your, your address?
My address is 9458 East Oak Ridge Drive.
And your last name?
Saks, S-A-C-K-S.
Thank you, Jack. Um, so, we are looking at that intersection. In fact, Mike's got some wonderful ideas of things that are gonna happen there. So, we're actually gonna have a town council meeting the second.
Pardon me?
Second Wednesday of next month.
Yes.
We're gonna have a town council meeting, and the engineers are gonna come in and talk about how we're going to improve 93rd, including that intersection.
It's just terrible.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Can I get your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, sir. Uh, my name is Terry Nellman. Uh, I've been a resident of Cali, I'm sorry, of St. John for, whoa, 20, 22, 23 years. Uh, previous address was 10393 Old Cot, uh, for 20 years, beautiful. Built a home here in, um, in the gates of St. John Cypress Gates, and we've been there about a year and a half. Uh, nice place in the country. Uh, the reason why I'm here today with backed-up documentation, we have a big, major problem with the harboring uh, by the, um, Gates of St. John's Homeowners Association harboring, um, unsafe, unsafe homes. Uh, structural issues, they've been brought to the building department in the old regime, the old council, before you people were in. It's a very serious problem. Again, I don't come up here just to talk, to speak without having any kind of backup, full documentation, pictures. Uh, big problem that we've got is somewhere along the line, we've got a builder that thinks he, uh, the builder is Lennar, Lennar Homes. And if I can, just real briefly, I want to definitely say to Mike Schilling, this has got nothing to do with the Schilling family. You people build beautiful units. But Lennar is, um, uh, building unsafe units. Again, the building department knows about it. Um, I have not, I've been in their office, we've had confrontations, uh, with the construction managers. Um, most of all, uh, in the documentation I have, I have a cease and desist order from Lennar Corporation in regards to talking with their people about their problems. Also, uh, a, uh, I had to make a police report. I had to make a police report because I was, I was accused of intimidation and harassment because of nothing being done by Lennar. Uh, the HOA with the harboring has got full knowledge. They have, uh, had me in court to pull down a public service warning that I had put up in my garage, within my four walls, within my windows, within my doors. Uh, we went through the courts with no problem, some outrageous, outrageous legal fees that were mysteriously waived by the association. This is a very, very serious problem, it's been ongoing, they are doing nothing, absolutely nothing, but putting people off. Now, that's Lennar. The association, again, had us in court, no problem, but they're not doing anything, and they are harboring and letting them continue to build these structural deficiency homes, which is, which I have documented to them. Three certified letters. If I may, I'll do my best to keep it within this three-minute limit.
You've got like 30 seconds, so if you could.
Um, but I do have the three.
You can bring them afterwards.
Certified letters, there's a receipts coming back from Lennar. The three top officials on board. No response, no response. We don't know what's going on with these permits. All we do know is, all we do know for sure is, we have an, a permit issue with the homeowners association that is totally unheard of. I, I've been in business for 31 years, self-employed. I have never seen a company like Lennar treat people the way they do. And this is here in St. John. You have to understand, we, they're also building in our neighboring, in our neighboring communities, Cedar Lake. Um, they're out in Crown Point. This is going on big time. I prepared packets for you, for the five members of the board, I would love to give them to you to review. Um, I am at your disposal, anytime, for the council and, and your attorneys, at any time. You've got to get this stopped, you've got my full cooperation with a full deposition of what has been going on in the gates of St. John with Lennar.
Okay.
And, final, the harboring of these homes that they are building.
I'll be more than happy to take those documents, if you have copies.
I did prepare five sets of, five sets of documents, I believe we have five, may I give them to you?
Yes.
There is, I didn't have the time to give you a, to give you a, um. Can you make sure that, uh, Mr. Blazek?
Yep, yep. Or you can give that to Brian, please. Copy it too, if you'd like it. All right.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, again, uh, I'm sorry if I ran over my time. I believe a few people, few people here know me, maybe you don't, but, uh, there's a lot of people in St. John, in the gates of St. John, in the same predicament. Okay? I have the two big toes, and I have the cast iron stomach to continue. I beg of you, turn it over to your attorneys, I have, I am willing to give a full deposition, no matter what it takes, to protect our neighborhood. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you, Terry. That's all you have? All right, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to number seven, uh, public hearings.
Mr. President, can I speak real quick?
Yes, you may, I'm sorry.
That's all right, I didn't, I got in too late.
I didn't, I didn't see you come in, I'm sorry, Ed.
Ed Con, 9227 West 91st Court. Gentlemen, I've, I've stood here for the last two years expressing my concerns over the, the past town council, issues in this town. Whenever I've stood up here on this podium, I've had black and white documentation to prove what I, I've brought up. Me as a resident, I will shortly be leaving the town of St. John, so this is my last meeting. I was at home packing, watching the live feed, and, and I can't take it anymore with Adrian. He stands here, month after month, spewing the same garbage about harassment, people following him, our clerk treasurer going after him, family members of the clerk treasurer. This is an open forum, I understand that, we have a freedom of speech. But this is going on so long, he does not belong here anymore unless he has something valuable to talk about to this town council. He fails every time he speaks, two months ago, after the town council meeting.
Address the chair, please.
Did, he got pulled over for speeding and eluding St. John Police till he pulled up in his driveway, had an altercation with them because he was a drunk driver. But yet, he's trying to blame Beth Hernandez, her husband, her mother, her father. It's got to end, it's up to you guys, I'm talking. Okay, whatever, anyway, this is what's gotta end. I'm leaving the town.
Adrian, I didn't interrupt you, I'd ask you not to interrupt our speaker. Adrian, please don't interrupt, Ed, go ahead.
This is what we go through, this is what you go through.
Mm-hmm.
All right? You're new council, you have hopefully many years ahead of you. This is uncalled for, for any resident. This podium is meant for a reason. To stand up and talk about issues that pertain to the town and the residents. Not his frickin' goofy ideas, sorry about that, over the past 10 years. All right, whatever, so anyway, that's my, that's why I rushed here from home in my garage packing, because I saw him spewing the same thing. All I ask of you guys moving forward, if he has a legitimate thing to complain about, let him speak. If not. There's a police officer right here, please, remove him. All right, that's all I ask as a resident, to be a former. So, thank you, good luck to all of you.
Thank you, Ed.
Thank you. Agree.
Is there anybody else that needed, wanted to make comment? Yes, you may.
My name's Tom Adamak, 9401 Chestnut Cove. We're talking about water, not bans, but maybe can you, can you put a restriction, say even odd, and a restriction where nobody waters on Sunday? Because it seems like every Monday is when you guys get sucked with no water. I mean, that would be, everybody could water three times a week, and Sunday would be a catch-up day. Would it be possible to say, hey, let's restrict the water even odd, and nobody waters on Sunday? That's all.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, we'll go on to number seven, public hearing. So, this is the second session on Ordinance 1709, which is an ordinance appropriating the proceeds derived from the sale of general obligation bonds of the town. Uh, Mr. Westlin?
Uh, Mr. President, the proofs of publication are in order.
Okay, public, our, our opening comments, Beth?
I will defer to, uh, Mr. Fasenda, who I know is in the audience this evening.
Okay.
Members of the council, I hope you can hear me, Phil Fasenda from Barnes and Thornburg. Uh, we're serving as bond counsel on the proposed general obligation bond of the town. This, uh, this ordinance, the additional appropriation ordinance, um, is the same subject matter as the following agenda item, which is the actual bond ordinance. So, um, I propose that I, um, provide a presentation, a short presentation with regard to what the bonds are, are for. And then, the additional appropriation, which is actually a public hearing, um, is simply to, to appropriate the bond proceeds, because they're not otherwise appropriated, um, funds.
So, you're gonna deal with 1708 and 1709?
Yeah, together, if it's, uh, if it's convenient, if it's convenient, yep. Uh, so, um, it is a general obligation bond, is, as is laid, as is set forth in both, um, as attachments to both ordinances, um, the, the projects are, um, the proposed necessary paving throughout the town. The costs, um, in connection with the condemnation action that was land acquisition by the town for road improvements. Construction of a new storage facility. The acquisition and installation of a brine system for the town. And then, other miscellaneous improvements, which would include, as I think the town council members are aware of the capital plan, the capital improvement plan of the town. So, um, that, that last item, um, it, it can incorporate any number of items that would come from the capital plan. The bonds themselves are, are in a principal amount not to exceed $5,300,000. The final maturity of the.
Sorry, is it 5,300? Sorry, is it 5,300 or 5,350?
What did I just say?
I'm sorry, 5,350,000.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I have a typo on my own stuff. It is bonds not to exceed 5,350,000. Thank you, thank you for that correction. Final maturity of the bonds would be no more than 20 years. So August of 2040 would be the final maturity of the bonds. All of this will be determined at the time that the bonds will be priced. So it won't exceed those limits in terms of the dollar size of the bond issue or the final maturity, but it could very well be less. The interest rate on the bonds, as set forth in the materials, is not to exceed 4.5%. If you've been paying attention to the marketplace, it would be likely that it would be quite a bit less than 4.5%. However, we put that in there again, as your action is only one action, and we don't want to have to come back to you. These are general obligation bonds, so the town has a certain general obligation limit. After these bonds would be issued in this amount, if it's issued in the maximum principal amount, there would still be $3,778,000 of general obligation limit that the town could still take advantage of if necessary. If the council moves forward adopting both ordinances tonight, from here, procedurally, we would provide another notice, as required by Indiana law, of your action tonight. And to alert the citizens of St. John that you've taken this action. And then we would proceed to get the bonds raided by a rating agency like Standard and Poor's and sold at a competitive sale. And that sale would likely be early October of this year, with a closing towards the end of October. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mike, anything? Wayne? Paul? No.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so we will then open this up to the floor for public comment. With that, before we get into that, I think one of the big projects we've got here, and this is basically just taking over a bond that's rolling off, so there's not going to be any additional burden on the town from what they're currently paying. Paul, did you want to talk about what you'd like to do here? Or what the goal is?
Sure, I was actually gonna speak to this at correspondence, but now is probably a better time. So as stated by Jerry and our bond counsel, we have a bond that's expiring. We're replacing it with another bond, so the payments stay the same for the town. And what we're looking to do as a council, and we've been working on our five-year plan, and this is incorporated into it, this bond is roads. Roads have been, everybody knows about the roads. I think I see Jeff out there, and you know, Spring Hill Drive, all these issues, right? So we get it, right? We're putting, we're building in, this has never been done before in St. John. We're building a million dollars a year into the budget. And it hurts, because it takes from everything else. There's no pile of money behind Town Hall. But we're painfully putting a million a year into the budget for roads. In addition, 93rd Avenue has been the beast that no one has been willing to slay in this town forever. It's too hard, too many, not enough room. I mean, yeah, it has every issue that you can ever imagine a road can have to try to expand it. So we're gonna try to make it function as well as it can without taking people's homes, basically by improving the bottlenecks. You don't have to have a superhighway, you just need to take the bottlenecks out. So on September 9th, we're gonna be, a meeting's gonna be scheduled by our chairman. We're gonna have three different consulting engineering firms in here that all have traffic engineers on staff to present to us why they think they can design this project. We're gonna pick a firm as a council. We're gonna have them complete engineering, figure out how much we can accomplish with the money we can pull out of this bond to do so, with the priority being the section between Prairie West Park and Town Hall, opening up that entire bottleneck. Kylman is an important part of that. Obviously, the intersection of US 41 and all the way to Thiel Street. We have other phases. Mikey and I spent a Saturday and a Sunday morning, about 5:30, 6:00 in the morning, out here doing a field trip with these firms and driving them through our town and showing them what we need. And actually, each firm had a guy who lived right in town that traveled with us. So we also showed them the section from Town Hall out to Claremont that sure could use a path so people in all those subdivisions could connect and maybe smooth out some of those curves. And we also showed them the east end of town from Marquette out to Klein. So anyway, I didn't mean to get too winded, but this is really an important project for the town. It's the kind of project people have been waiting for. We don't know what we're gonna be able to get done until the engineers start putting price tags on this. There's a lot of land acquisition, because folks own right to the center line of the road. So it's tricky, but we're gonna do it. So that's, when he talked about paving in this bond, we're not gonna, we're not gonna take a loan out or a bond and waste it on regular road maintenance. That's what we suffer with that million-dollar a year we already set aside. This is gonna be something extra, something special. So that's the goal with the, what he mentioned, what he called repaving. That's 93rd Corridor Project. So stay tuned, September 9th should be interesting. See what these engineers, see how they sell us on who can do the job the best, and we'll go from there.
So one of the questions I had was specifically what are you gonna use this bond money for? And a big chunk of it is gonna be that 93rd Street project. And that's why I wanted to, Paul, have Paul address that before I opened it up to public comment. So at this time, I'm gonna open up the public comment, but I would like to excuse Bob and Bob, if you'd like to go. Thank you for your input here this evening. I appreciate your willingness to help us out, and also the work you do for the town. It's really appreciated.
Jerry, do you need Hassan Associates still, or no?
I might.
Oh, you might? Okay, okay.
Can I ask you to ask the question before you leave? Because you said that you have comments if they, people have some question.
Yes, in a minute. Do we have people signed up for this?
No, sir.
Okay, so Adrian, you may step up.
Make sure it's only on 93rd.
Adrian, 11747 West 98th Avenue.
This has to do with the...
With Mr. Haas, I have a question. When you people do studies for the development or whatever it is, it's the town of St. John paying you for the study? I think that if you do business with the town, you should do, like everybody else, compete in bids, whatever it is. You came up with this conclusion. Because you do the business, and I'm sure you are gonna put that thing into the price, because you spend time, and time is money. I'm an engineer retired, I work a million-dollar projects. But why should the town of St. John pay you?
Adrian...
If you get the thing, you get your money back.
Adrian, when we do work, we put it out to bid, and we try to get competitive pricing so we can have the best deal. So yes, they do do business with the town of St. John, they do bill us for that, because we've selected them to be our town engineers. So do you have any questions or comments?
They should do this without us paying. If they get the job, because they got a better bid or whatever it is, then they can tack into it, because it's normal, they spend time to develop it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else have any comment on this bond? All right, then we'll close the floor. I'm gonna open up to the town council. Mike, you have any comments, questions?
Well, like Paul said, you know, one of the biggest projects we intend to get done is from Prairie West Park to right out here in Dillon, in the Kylman intersection and the 41 intersection. That is one of the biggest problems we have traffic-wise in this town, is that corridor end. There was one gentleman up there earlier that lives on East Oak Ridge. I hope we get it done before Moon and Venus meet again. But it is fast-tracked and that is, that is the project we're gonna be focused on to get done.
Thank you, Mike. Wayne, do you have anything?
None.
Paul?
No, sir.
Brian, you have any questions?
No, thanks for asking.
Then I will consider a motion to consider ordinance 1709 on second reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Paul. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. A roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. And then we will also look to adopt ordinance 1709 in second reading. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pandinos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Then we'll move on to ordinance 1708, which actually authorizes the issuance and sale of the bonds for 5 million, up to 5,350,000. Do I have a motion to consider ordinance 1709 on second reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Paul. A roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Thank you. Before I go on to item B, gentlemen, looking at the agenda, do you see any reason why we need Haas here? Tim, any further at this meeting?
No, I was thinking for coming out, though.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you for being out here, we appreciate it. When we've got some concerns like this, we appreciate you being ready to come out and help us out. Thank you. Thank you both.
We'll be looking forward to the presentation to the water board, as well as hopefully the council, once you get everything, your proposal all in line.
Thank you, Scott. All right, and then I think we need to, I need a motion to adopt ordinance 1709 on second reading.
That's what I was...
It's 1708.
1708, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1708 on second reading?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have support?
Second.
Thank you, Wayne. A roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Thank you.
Anything else you've got for us before you go?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you. Then we'll move on to 8B, is to consider ordinance 1710, which is an ordinance clarifying and designating the zoning and the zoning map for certain real estate consisting of 111.62 acres and 40.33 acres. Mr. Westlin, any comments on that?
No. No, it's, the ordinance is to clarify and designate the zoning consistent with the court order that we received.
Okay. Any questions or comments, gentlemen?
No, sir.
Nope.
All right. Then I am looking for a motion to consider ordinance 1710 on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So then based on that, do we have a motion to adopt ordinance 1710 on first reading? Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support?
Support.
Thank you, Paul. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Move on to 8C, which is an ordinance 1711, establishing community garden system. Can you give us a little more detail on 1711, Mr. Westlin?
Sure. So ordinance 1711, which establishes the community garden system, sets up a committee for appointment to oversee the community garden system. I know you previously had an ordinance that was passed prior to the first of this year. The problem was how it was passed procedurally didn't line up with the statute and was, in my opinion, ineffective. There were only three members of the council present, and it was passed on first reading, which as you are all aware, you can't do. So what we did is, we took a look at that old ordinance, updated it to include a committee, because that was also one of the things that the past council tried to do, but didn't do it effectively either. So we've kind of added those, that item in, and that's in section five of the new ordinance. So I mean, I'm happy to take any questions, but it was necessary because the old ordinance wasn't adopted correctly.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Then I am looking for a motion to consider ordinance 1711 on first reading.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number 1711 on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Do I have support for that?
I'll support.
Thank you, Wayne. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Based on that, I'd like a motion to adopt ordinance 1711 in first reading. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. So as far as the committee to run our community garden system, I would like to, I'd like to appoint the ladies that have been working on that, and were appointed earlier, would be Toni Duty, Veronica Williams, and Marla Durney. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So congratulations, ladies. I think we have also kind of agreed that the spot by the parking lot, that's a little bit north of where we were looking at before, is gonna be the best spot for that.
Right, we just have to look. There's some slopes in there, but I don't know exactly where, but over there, now that is on the map, on the GIS, that's...
Town property.
Town property, so...
So we'll, my suggestion is that we will continue to run that here. I know your concern was turning it over to the parks. We've got a new director there. So let's keep that here with the town council. We'll run the organization through the town manager. And then once we maybe get that organized, then it may be, we may hand it off at that time, but for the time being, we'll run that through the town council, through the town manager. You guys good with that? Okay.
Will they use rain barrels to water the flowers?
That's a good idea.
That's a committee decision, you'll have to ask them.
There's a lot of rooftop on that, on that building out there. That'd be pretty neat.
Okay. Then let's move on. Item D is ordinance 1712, which is an ordinance amending our town ordinance 1385 related to the rates and charges for the use and services rendered by Water Works Systems of the town. Mr. Westlin? Mr. Westlin?
So this ordinance eliminates the so-called hydrant fee that the town was paying to the, to the water utility.
Okay. Any questions from anyone there?
No.
All right. So I am looking for a motion then to consider ordinance seventeen twelve on first reading.
I'll make a motion to consider ordinance number seventeen twelve on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that? Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So that is approved five to zero. So based on that, we'll look for a motion to adopt ordinance seventeen twelve on first reading. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number seventeen twelve on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So that is approved five to zero. We will move on to item E, to consider resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight dash two six, which is a resolution initiating a proposal to waive the past payments owed, owed by the town of St. John to the Board of Waterworks for the rates and charges and use of services rendered by the water work system, and specifically the municipal hydrants. Any questions on this? Any comments, Mr. Westlin?
No, your ordinance that you just passed, seventeen twelve, deals with that issue going forward. This resolution deals with the past.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight dash two six? Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
Second that.
Thank you, Mr. Pand-
Panzik.
Mr. Panzik, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So that is approved five to zero. Item F, consider resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight dash two six B, which is a resolution amending resolution twenty twenty dash oh four dash two two, waiving late fees for the delinquent utility fees during the COVID-19 pandemic. Mr. Westlin?
This extends your previous resolution, which, you know, I set forth in paragraph one was April, well, the state of emergency being April through September of twenty twenty. I think there was an issue of timing in terms of when those bills were sent out, but this resolution directs the staff to implement the policy of waiving late fees incurred by residents for the months of July, August, and September twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you.
Technical difficulties here, sorry.
Yeah, mine turned off.
Does that means we're done?
I thought we hung up on Brian or something. All right. Beth, any comments?
None.
No, okay. All right, so then we're looking for some council action, so a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash oh eight dash two six B, which is waiving late fees for the delinquent utility fees during COVID-19. Do I have a motion? Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that? Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. So that is approved five to zero. We'll go to item G. Consider the amended and restated sewer installation reimbursement agreement, which is an agreement by the town between, which is an agreement by and between the town of St. John and Illiana Christian High School Association. This is to correct the typographical discrepancy in the original agreement. Exhibit C amortization schedule, which was executed on June twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, and recorded as document number twenty eighteen zero four eight seven one seven in the office of the Recorder of Lake County, Indiana. Mr. Westlin?
So this issue was originally brought to my attention by Mr. Everly. There was a discrepancy in the amortization schedule in that the years contained thirteen months. And so we had to rerun the amortization schedule correctly to reflect twelve months and a year.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended and restated sewer installation reimbursement agreement between the town of St. John and the Illiana Christian High School Association, and authorize the town council president to sign.
Thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Panzik. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes, that is approved five to zero. Item H, consider the acceptance of a cash escrow in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars for the Continental Unit Two. It's received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Do I have a motion to accept the escrow in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars for the Continental Unit Two?
So moved.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak. Is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Paul. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes, thank you. That passes five to zero. Item I is the subdivision control ordinance notice of acceptance of the town council revisions by the Plan Commission. There is no action required on this. Mr. Everly's letter to the town council reporting the Plan Commission's acceptance of the revisions dated August sixth, twenty twenty can be referenced or read into the record. Anything we need to do there, Mr. Westlin?
No.
Okay. We move on. Item J, Veterans Memorial Update and Discussion. John, if you want to come up to the podium? How do you give us an update on where, what you got?
The update on there is the survey was done. He should be finished with the survey. He told me last week, ten to twelve working business days. The engineering firm cannot move forward without that survey, but he will be present here with me in September's meeting with the three D renderings and the displays, the layouts and everything. I don't know if you all received my email, which was concerning your concern with the eternal flame.
Yes.
So the safeguards that were going to be in place was going to-
You could address that, yes.
It would be a three-foot-high, ten-foot-diameter circular stone with landscaping in the middle with a ten-inch diameter flame in the middle, which would sit about this high with a protective cage around it.
Okay.
So that would, it would be impossible to reach into it.
Okay.
So that would be the safeguard for that. Do you guys have any questions for me on the memorial?
Wayne, anything?
No, I think, I think you're doing a good job, and you're like Pac-Man. You're not going to stop.
I won't. I promise you.
Mike, anything? Brian?
No.
I think it's going to be a huge, a lot bigger memorial than what I anticipated and visualize it to be. I visualize it much smaller than that. I think it's going to be a landmark. That is going to be something the town can be proud of. I'm looking forward to seeing it work its way through.
Can I just give a brief, brief, because I know everybody wants to get out of here, but for anybody that doesn't know, this, this memorial, which will be placed behind us here at Civic Park, will be based on corporate and public donations. The town council and the town, there's no money coming in it from there. It will be the two- to three-year project for start to finish. And with the connections that I have achieved over the last five years, as I did with the Lansing Veterans Memorial, the donation should come in pretty quick, and so it should be something beautiful and honoring all our fallen. So I think that town, the town, it would bring a great generation to this town to see, so.
Okay.
I thank you guys very, very much for all your support on this.
Okay, Mr. Westlin?
Is the Lansing Veterans Memorial, is that the one with the helicopter in the middle of it?
Yes, actually, I was a part of painting all that, so, so it's-
Are we going to get a helicopter? Are we getting a rocket ship, or what are we?
You know I'm going to get a helicopter, so. I have been in touch with the Gary Sneeze Foundation, and they have backed us on this, so cross your fingers on that one.
Mr. Westlin?
After the last meeting and the council expressing its desire to move forward with this, I did have a couple of conversations with Johnny, as well as exchanged some emails. I think he understands. I mean, we've talked about the fact that we need that survey to decide, you know, once we see the survey, we can, I can give you a recommendation about whether you're going to, you know, whether it's a long-term lease, whether it's a license, whether it's, you know, a land donation, how exactly the mechanism that will then be recorded and how that gets over to him. So we're still working through that a little bit, but, you know, I was able to, he was able to give me the documentation to check out, you know, the five oh one C three and all that stuff, so, I mean, he's certainly moving in the right direction.
And then also, if you guys did not see it, in between that playground and the actual start of the walkpaths and memorials, there will be a twelve-foot berm separating the playground, so aesthetically, you're not going to look at playground equipment. It's going to keep in the confines of the memorial site itself.
Okay.
So. I'm not familiar with surveys. Do surveys usually take twelve to fourteen days? I mean, is that something common, or?
That's pretty quick.
It is.
Pretty quick, yeah.
For a survey?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. I was hoping to have it here for you tonight.
You've done somebody pretty hard to get it in that short a time, so.
Actually, I think he needs to have it and do his research before it actually can come to this meeting for action, so that's, that's, I think that's going to hold-
Yeah, he's already in the emails with the, with Bill, so whenever he sends it to me, it's going to go, it's actually going to go to all of you, so you can see it.
All right.
And Mr. Swett, so, and for Dave's benefit, we were asked to look into the property ownership situation, and so we're still researching that, the county. Their systems have been down the last few days, and so when we get that information, we'll pass it along regarding the Building Corporation versus the town.
Okay.
And that's a factor as well, so the, I'll get the deed and any other restrictive covenants or anything like that that we can find from that transfer, when I think, believe it was transferred to us back in the eighties, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Okay. So I, we're moving forward. We're just got a couple of little things to do here, but I don't, I don't think that, have we ever taken any action on anything with this?
No.
No. Even authorization of some funding?
The funding authorization, at the last meeting, my recollection is, is that the discussion was, and in fact, I think I communicated, communicated this with John earlier, last, you know, right after the last meeting, was you wanted to, the consensus was you wanted him to bring the receipts of money spent, and then you were going to reimburse that
Okay.
up to a certain dollar figure, and the number fifteen thousand was, was used. And I think that's where you guys landed at the last meeting, so. And that's kind of what we talked about.
Right, well, so when we come up with it, there's not going to be really a receipt for that fifteen thousand, like the survey company and the engineering firm. We'll go straight to the clerk treasurer's office.
Is that okay, Mr. Westlin?
And then, and then you see in the proposal, a normal engineering firm is about five, seven grand to do this. His whole family is a veteran, so he gave it to us for twelve hundred.
Cheap.
So that is very, very cheap, which is great, so everybody's really on this, so thank you, guys.
So Beth, you're okay with, you've got a fund, or you can work that through?
Yes, I mean, we can make it work. I, it'd probably be cleaner just to have the, rather than us give Mission One money for Mission One to pay so-and-so, it's probably cleaner just to have us pay whoever the company is directly.
Right.
Like a request to purchase, almost.
Right.
Yeah. Or like an RTP process, yep.
Okay, so we'll work through that? We're all good, then?
Yeah.
Do we want to do that tonight?
You, you could do that tonight. I know you, you talked about it last month. I don't believe we ever had a formal motion and approval of that, but, I mean, certainly an amount. Everyone understands what the ground rules are now, so, you know, if you want to approve something up to a certain amount.
I'm fine with that. I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve up to fifteen thousand for the project, because that was his original number that he came with.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schilling. Is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Mr. Pandinos. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. All right, do you have a question, Mike?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, John. Appreciate it.
Okay, item K is the board and commission appointments. Following appointments to fill vacancies that came about this year. Town council action, so.
Got a question, Mr. President?
Yes. I'm sorry.
You had asked me about some of these names, and there's one name you didn't ask me about. But two of these members, I went home, I'm on TV going through this stuff, watching some of the meetings. Two of them are already on a board. How can we, how can they serve on a board when they haven't been appointed by us?
They're not.
I mean, I have nothing against the, the people, but we should have all been notified on, on everybody. I mean, to, you know, be transparent and honest with each other. I know you asked me about two of the, the candidates, but the other one you didn't. And then if we go down to the, the last one, she's going to be on three boards. Is there not any way that we can put more people, have more people that have applied for applications for, for any of these boards? Can we do that, or?
Nobody applied, Wayne.
Right, okay, and, and that's fine, but my, my other question is, is why are two people on the board and then going to meetings, and we never, never appointed them? And if the other town council did this before us, we would have been up in arms.
It would, it was a slip up in, in two cases because we, we didn't, we didn't do it last month.
Right, but again, I have nothing against those people, but it's, it's the procedure that we're, that we were doing. That's, that's not right. We didn't follow some of our, our procedures in doing that when we hired everybody else.
Which procedures, as far as?
Well, interviews.
Interviews were, the interviews were done.
Right, but now, again, they were done on, on the phone, and that should have been two councilmen. Just like when we did the park board, and anybody else, we had two councilmen present.
We had two councilmen do interviews.
Well, I, you know, I think it should have been transparent across all of us, not, not just three or four. And like I say, I have nothing against these people. They're all good people. It's the procedure, how we did it.
Well, I'm sorry if Brian, I'm sorry if Brian didn't talk to you about it, so.
I wasn't aware that everyone didn't know. I, I actually submitted, like, in, in the case of Mr. Slager, it had to be a certain profession.
Right, there has to be developer, a realtor, all of that. I get that, and I have no problem with it, like I said.
I just wanted to make you aware, I didn't know, I submitted that to Brian as a, hey, try this guy. He might do it, right?
Right.
So, and then that's where I left it off. I didn't know who would, you know, who would talk to who, and so.
I remember some of us on this, on this board complained when the other previous town council did that. When they sat up here and our names came up, I applied, and it was nothing, nothing, and they just decided who they wanted to do, and I, I gotta say, I don't have a problem with it. I have a problem with the procedure.
Okay.
No, I agree. Everyone, everyone should have been clued in on that.
And you did, and clue me in on, on two of them out of the four. And I did talk to Brian with two, and I gotta say, it's just the, the way it's being done.
I, I didn't make any appointments. I, I submitted suggestions.
Point taken.
And that's, thank you. Thank you.
No, I mean, we want to try to get everything out in the open and do things as, as transparent as possible, so I understand. That being said, Brian, you want to make a motion for your impact fee advisory committee?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jack Slager and Joan McInerney to the impacted fee advisory committee.
Thank you, Brian. Do I have support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That passes five to zero. Sanitary District, that's yours, Wayne. So you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Kim Crowe to the Sanitary District.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved, five to zero. Brian, you want to work on the building corporation and redevelopment authority?
I'll make a motion to appoint Yolanda Cardona to the Building Corp and Redevelopment Authority.
Thank you, is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mike, roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved, five to zero. All right, number nine, reports and correspondence, Town Council, Mike?
I have one thing here, I came up, Chief Flores sent me a request the other day, one of their officers left due to a disability, and in the past, when an officer retires, they give them their service pistol, so there's a request here.
I would like to have that referred to the safety board, if you're okay with that, because.
Not a problem, I will take it to the next safety board meeting.
That's just what I'd like to do, are you guys okay with that?
Sure.
Yep.
Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to step on anybody's toes by taking their responsibilities away from them, so if you could refer that to the safety board. Anything else?
First, I want to thank the engineers for coming out here and explaining the water system to us today. Also, I want to thank the two guys from the Public Works Department that came out here. We appreciate that. With that being said, we had the stuff on 96 today, we opened up the, we had to change order, and then we awarded the contract for the dirt remediation to go through to Jolly Etch Street. I'm glad that the process is continually going, you know, it's a hard one, we're taking darts at it, or I'm trying to dodge them, but, and all of us up here, but one of the worst things that we could have done was not kept the project going. I know it's painful for people to see it, the overruns, but at the end of the day, when we get done with this, it will beautify our town, and I'm happy to be a part of keeping the project going. Paul's worked a lot on that, I appreciate you for that.
Thanks.
Other than that, I don't have anything at this time.
Okay. Wayne?
Yeah, I'd like to thank all the town staff for all their hard work and everything that they're doing. My wife and I, we just started, to show support for the police, we decided to put blue lights on our porch, and we leave them on all night long. I'm encouraging the town, maybe that would be a good idea for everybody in the town, put blue lights on your, for your garage, for your porch, to show support for the police. I think that's a great idea. The next thing I'd like to talk about is a study session every month for this town council. I think Mr. Westling would agree that would be a good idea, and that would be a good way to inform the residents what's going on in town before we have an actual town council meeting. I think Jerry, you said you wanted to make it two council meetings, or have that, so if we had to vote on anything, we can do that at that time.
So, yeah, so what we did last month, or actually earlier this month, is rather than have the study session, we actually had a special town council meeting, so that way we could conduct some business that needed to be done on a, you know, on every other week basis, and so I'd kind of like to do that same thing at our September 9 meeting, is that what is, September 9, I believe?
Yeah, so that's what we're looking to add in a meeting in September, too.
And that's what we campaigned on, we, all of us, I think, well, Jerry wasn't part of our campaign, but you campaigned.
When I campaigned, it was for trying to do the study sessions every, once every quarter.
Right.
And you guys want to try to do them every month, so as long as we've got something that's worth a study for, I would encourage that as well.
Good communication is good. And then I want to bring up Wells 3 and 5, we have a bid to lower them and rebuild them. They want to lower them down to, I think, another 20 feet, but the bid to rebuild them is $90,000. That wouldn't be now, it'd probably be in the fall and winter of time. So it's 90,020, and that's Wells 3 and 5, and that's to rebuild them from the head down, and that's all new, new stuff. I did talk to the Water Board, and I think the last meeting at the Water Board, they referred it to us, so they're in favor, they all know what's going on, there's no one, we're not, you know, cutting anybody out or anything like that, so that's good. Then my next one is a request to purchase.
Before you move off of that one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So do we need to take some action on that referral?
Well.
From the Water Works?
We can't, we can't do anything right now, I talked to Bob V., he said we can wait till the fall or winter, because you actually have to shut the wells down.
Okay.
And we don't want to shut 3 and 5. Everybody has the quote here, you all have it, so we, I mean, if you want to do it now, that's fine, and just give it to Beth, and she'll put that off on the side, that she knows that money's going to be used.
Was it approved by Water Works?
Yes, I think so, I don't have the minutes, and they, they.
If it can wait, can we just wait till next month?
Yeah, I'm just letting you guys know, and that's fine.
No, I'm all for that.
And then the next one was, and I, Dave will have to get involved with this, I think, this is a request to purchase, and that's the transition line out there on, for east of Klein, and that's going east, and then going to go north, and it's going to go right into well 8. I did talk to the Water Board, everybody's on board with it, but the recorded, it's not a recorded easement yet, and there's a, there's a problem with, we can do it, but we're going to be improving somebody's property. And I talked to you this afternoon, I talked to Dave, they ordered the pipe and everything, and they want to do it, we want to do it, but that's the only catch right there.
So can we approve this, Dave, pending completed work for the property?
You can, you can approve the.
We don't want to slow the project down, we want to get it done.
So you can approve it conditioned upon the recording of the easement that's necessary for the pipe?
Okay. Did you want to make that motion, Wayne?
Yeah, I'd like to make a request to purchase the water transition line and the fiber optic line that would go parallel to it for the gates east at a price of $145,284.05, pending on the condition of us getting the recorded easement for said property.
Okay. Is there support for that?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions?
Just to clarify on it, just a little bit, this is a line that's going to go from the well to just about the east part of the gates and tie into a water line, this, this will not complete the line all the way to the well. There is still a part on Park Place that will, it's about 400 or 500 feet after this is done, that will finally connect it, so.
Right, it's over by Redeemer Church, and then it has to cross Parkway, and it's going to go into the treatment plant.
But this portion tonight is.
Is going, it's 100 feet already passed, already east of Klein, they're going to tie on there, they're going to go, because they're going to put, pave in the streets pretty soon, we're going to go on, they're going to go through the street before they pave it, and then they're going to go north, it's probably 1,400 feet of pipe, it's 18-inch pipe, and next to it will be a 3-inch conduit for fiber optic, which will make Jason happy, because he wants, he wants to get that going. It'll be all the way under the property for the, for the well. But the only thing was the easement and the deed, we want to get that set up, because we don't want to improve property that's not ours.
All right.
You can see on the monitor that right now, the existing line turning out about here, go, go to about here, and then go north.
Right. Into the well. And I, Brian's been out there with me, I showed him, and then also on the entrance, the road going in, they're going to tee off of that 18-inch line, and they're going to come south about 30 feet, just to be underneath the road with an 18-inch line and stop, and after well 9 gets put in, if it's a good well, then we're going to run a line from there to well 9, but we'll all be, we'll be set up. And it's all, it's 18-inch line right now, if 9 is a good producer well when we drill it, it'll be up to the engineers to use an 18-inch line or a 12-inch line, whatever they want to use, I trust what they're, what they're saying.
Wayne, let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
We, you talked about 90,000 to rebuild two wells, okay?
Right.
My only, my only question is, is, is it conducive to do it just anytime, because it's not going to have anything to do with the new SCADA system and all the, all the tie-ins and everything that are going to be on SCADA?
Well, those wells run real, real good now in the summer, so if you're talking about time, it should be done in the wintertime. And what's happening is.
Well, no, no, I was curious if it's gonna, you know, if we're going to do something ahead of SCADA, maybe, you know, should we wait for, is it necessary to wait for SCADA so that it can be all done at one time?
Well, I think it should be done relatively soon, because what they're, they're going to rebuild it. And I think maybe Mikey knows that you should rebuild, rebuild that well, right?
What we're talking about now is this, you're talking about the water line.
Well, he's asking, he's asking.
Yeah, but that was the.
He's asking about 3 and 5.
We're on a discussion for the motion for the purchase of the water pipe for the.
We are, for the gates east.
Oh, no, I, I've seen all that, I'm all for that. I'm talking about the 90,000.
I know, but we're. Yeah.
We're not on that motion right now, Brian, we're on a motion. There's a motion on the floor that's up for discussion, and that's for the water main line going into east gates.
Yeah, 143 grand.
Right, 145, 284.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. President, I have a question, I just want to confirm that these are two RTPs combined together into one, that's R and R sewer, for R and R sewer, is this what we're talking about?
Yes.
I have two RTPs, when I add them together, they total $145,284.
And 5 cents.
Both of these requests to purchase are being combined into one with the same condition.
Right. Good point.
That's his motion. And we had seconded on that already, right?
I will amend my second to reflect the clarification given by the clerk treasurer.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. A roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzek?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swett?
Yes. Anything else, Wayne?
And then one other thing, we, we're missing a computer slash tablet from one of the previous councilmen, and Craig was going to check on that.
I'm sorry, what?
Well, that's okay.
Sorry.
That computer slash tablet that we're missing from a previous councilman.
And I called him again and left him a message, so.
It's been eight months since we asked him, and we've been asking.
Yep, I called and asked him again, so I did follow up as you asked, and.
So.
Now, that being said, I've been told that it's, you know, the equipment is probably pretty close to obsolete at this point, too, given the age of it, but I have asked for it, like you, like you asked from your.
Okay.
No, I think that'll still be, that would still be good, we can still put that to use.
So I have asked, I have followed up with him and asked him again, and I left a message again.
Maybe we have to call it, hold up our attorney to send him a letter.
Maybe.
So I'll leave that in your hands.
Yeah, I mean, if that thing's still serviceable, that might work for our water truck, and if it's old, when we go on water main problems, it's that big step van, we could leave it in there, that would be great, because if the mapping gets done, all the mapping would be on that tablet.
Yep.
Right, Jason?
If it's obsolete, it might just be a paperweight.
It's pretty old.
Oh, okay, all right.
Tablets don't last as long as laptops.
Well, I'm just asking, you know, but, but thank you.
I did follow up on that, so hopefully we'll hear something.
No, okay. All right, Paul?
And thanks for following up on that, yeah, anything that's the town's property should be returned regardless of value, I think that's just proper and just.
Yeah, we're missing some badges, too.
Yeah, that's an old story.
So I would like to just mention something that was on the agenda tonight, the subdivision control ordinance has now been finalized, and I just want to make the public and the council aware, that, that's a huge step. It was a large undertaking for the plan commission, they've been working on it all year, and Mr. Everly, and with our department heads, and Bob Loy, Bob Davis, and what that means, the subdivision control ordinance dictates the standards on how you build things, and I know Wayne had input on that as well, so we're going to be building better infrastructure in our subdivisions, and it also addresses the issue with building close to pipelines. We will now have a buffer zone on any new proposals that'll have to be in place, so that houses won't be too close to a potential hazard, there'll be a safe zone, so really happy to see them finish that. The next item they're going to tackle is the zoning ordinance, which is the companion document that talks more about development standards in towns, so we're already diving into that, we're working on that every, every two weeks for the rest of the year, so, so happy that's done, I'm thankful for the folks who spend all that time with it. Second thing, just so everyone knows, we have the ability to notify residents via text, email, or robocall, we're part of the county 911, I'm sorry, smart 911 system, it's a great system, please, I advise you to sign up, if you need help signing up, you can call the town manager's office, or, or work with Jason here, he'd be happy to assist, I'm sure any residents that need help signing up to that system, and it's easy to do, it does not require an app, although there's an app out there, I don't have the app, I just signed up, it was pretty easy. I get alerts, got one from the town, I get them from Lake County about road closures and construction, it's very convenient, you sign up for what you want, and you don't sign up for what you don't want, it's really simple, but I encourage everyone to look into the smart 911 system for getting, being better informed outside of social media. So this gives residents who just, maybe just have a landline, a way to do it, so please spread the words to your neighbors and friends, that we have a system to communicate, and that they could sign up. That will be it for tonight, I.
I got one question for you, Paul, if you want to expand or not, something with you and Mikey this, this beginning of the week?
Mm-hmm.
With that meeting, was there?
Oh, I'd be happy to talk to that, sure, so just to keep the residents informed, I, I'm careful not to say too much, because I don't want anyone to, to get the wrong impression, but through Craig, we've, we've connected to the owner of the former Kmart in town, in fact, through one of Craig's associates in Chesterton, I believe, and we, we had an introductory meeting about a month ago, getting a know you session, and introducing the new administration in town, and, and shoot, that meeting turned out to be an hour and 15 minutes, and we had another follow-up meeting, was it yesterday? I'm losing track of days.
Yeah, I think so.
It's been a busy week, had another follow-up meeting yesterday, actually ran over, ran into an hour and a half, so what we're doing with the, the owner of the Kmart building doesn't just own it, he manages it, they develop it, they do everything, and really, he's not just an owner, it's, he represents a company, obviously, and they're, they're a large company, and so we're just exchanging ideas with them and inviting them to propose any ideas they may have, telling them that we may be flexible in zoning or considerations, and, and telling them we have, you know, various ideas, and we've done a lot of idea exchange on the property, such as, maybe that property isn't correct for a big box anymore, that was 40 years ago, and now it's right in the middle of town, next to residences, maybe we could do something more downtownish there, smaller business, or mixed development, so, so we threw a lot of ideas at him, and he was very receptive, and it'll just be interesting to see where that goes, so, you know, all we could do, we can't make a landowner do something with their property, but we could certainly open up the dialogue, have conversations, and keep those conversations open, and Craig and I talked to him about having another meeting, probably in about another two weeks, and he's going to actually throw some ideas at us as well, and so trying to get a, get a spark of activity there, so.
Just trying to get him to think outside the box, you know, outside the big box.
Right, outside the box, I mean, retail is difficult now, I mean, bricks and mortar, right now, I mean, even existing successful developments are under pressure, shops on Main, things like that are likely under pressure, because of, because of not only Amazon, but COVID now as well, so, so, you know, we'd rather not see that building sit vacant another 10 years, and trying to spark some movement, or at least dialogue with the town, and, and open up the channels, and so far it's been very successful.
Anything else?
Uh, no, thanks.
Brian?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I'd like to echo some of the, you know, thanks for the work that's been done by some of our, some of our boards, some of our employees, just a reminder that we're still, we've got a little bit of time left yet for the census, if you haven't, if you know somebody who hasn't signed up yet, we still need to get all those counted, we'd like to see close to 100% for St. John's, so we can get as much funding as possible. Beth?
Just a couple of things, first, going back to Mike Schilling with the service weapon, in the past, just to kind of make everybody aware, the retired weapon would require a hold harmless and indemnification agreement, so even if it goes before the Board of Safety, I still think it's, and Dave could correct me if I'm wrong, I still think it's going to have to come back to the council with this agreement. The, oh, this one I talked to Jerry today about briefly, so we've been working on the five-year plan, as you're all, all aware, and so we want to make sure the appropriation numbers that are being assigned to certain projects match the five-year plan, so I guess I would request, this goes to the Flex Court Athletics that the Park Board approved at its July meeting, per the five-year plan, one of the parks, Lancer Park, was supposed to come out of Loet, a Loet distribution fund, and so I would, I guess I would request a motion to reassign the Lancer Park basketball courts from Flex Court Athletics in the amount of $19,636.67 from Fund 473, which was the Park Impact Fund, to Fund 257, which is our lit distribution fund, to conform to our five-year plan. It comes back to you because you have authority to approve payments out of the lit distribution fund, not the Park Board.
Okay. Do I have a motion for that? So we're going to move $19,636 from Funds 473 over to 257, so it's coming out of the impact fee and going into the Loet fund.
Right.
Right. So...
So moved.
Thank you, Wayne, is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Paul. Roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
He's muted.
Wake up, Brian.
He's busy fighting his nails.
I'm muted, yes.
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 Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swet?
Yes. So that is approved five to zero. Anything else, Beth?
I think those were my only two items for this time.
Okay. Craig?
Just a few items, we had previously posted on the town website and social media that unfortunately the fireworks display that we hoped to have had on Labor Day, actually on Friday the 4th of September for Labor Day, is going to be postponed, and likely until next year, 4th of July, I think is what we're targeting, so just a reminder to residents that that's the situation with that, due to the recommendation made by our public safety departments, both police and fire, at a recent meeting where we went over a lot of details related to that, and we've collected a lot of information from our neighboring town of Sherrville on how they were able to do their event, and we've learned a lot from that information that we received, and I can also pass the information I received from the Town Manager, Bob Volpin, on to the council, so you have that information. The second thing is, there have been a number of concerns from residents with regard to the closure of the splash pad, just wanted to talk about that a little bit, given the fact that we had made repairs to the splash pad to replace the control panel, shortly after those repairs were made, the new panel was damaged with a water main break, unfortunately, and we, we replaced it with the pad, the pad that had been there before, and what that results in is a situation where the timer associated with that equipment doesn't work, and given in light of us asking residents to cut back and conserve on their water, we felt it wasn't appropriate, it wasn't appropriate for us to have the water on constantly at the splash pad for hours a day. Now, given the fact that we, you know, we will be closing it down, I believe, Labor Day is usually when that's closed down, if I might correct on that, as far as I understand, we'll talk to the Park Board to see if they want to open it back up again in a limited capacity or keep it the way it is, it's up to them, but I just want to let you know that that's why that decision was made, it was in consultation with both the Public Works and Parks Departments as well, so just an update on that. And then just one reminder, and I believe this was placed on the social media and the town website as well, correct me if I'm wrong, Jason, but we are looking for applicants for the Tree Board, just a reminder to residents, if you're interested in serving on the Tree Board for the town, please submit applications to us if you're interested in that, so the Town Council can consider those and take action on appointments.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Westlin, anything?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Then let's move on to item 10, request to purchase, Beth?
Okay, so we are back to three, request to purchase, the first is to S D Improvements Incorporated, this is actually a project being held in my office in the amount of $10,238.88. It is to create three employee workstations and to create an ADA compliance or an ADA counter where we can comply with ADA rules and regulations. I think I mentioned to all of you that with this project, I would then be willing to, our new Park Superintendent doesn't have office furniture, so we would end up taking one of our desks and donating it over to the Parks Department so that they don't have to use their budget to purchase new, so that is our first request to purchase. Second is to Holland Asphalt, this was emergency repairs for a water main break on West 93rd Avenue, east of US 41, in the amount of $4,960. And the third request to purchase is to Al Warren Oil, for, again, Indiana unleaded gasoline, in the amount of $13,287.86.
Okay. So we've got those three requests to purchase, do we have a motion to approve those?
We have a motion to approve the request to purchases.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Wayne. A roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Muted again.
You're muted.
Yes, I am, yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swet?
Yes. Okay. So we move on to payment of the bills for the corporation, we've got a docket in front of us for $1,708,1512. Do I have a motion?
So moved, $1,780, or $708,1512.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak, is there support for that?
Support.
Thank you, Wayne, roll, roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. Let us approve five to zero. Anything else we need to cover, Mr. Schilling? Wayne?
No.
Paul?
Yes, I would just like to make a comment regarding a public comment that was made tonight, and it relates back to our ordinance regarding public comments, so I think it's really important for the council to stay on point relative to 2020 and pertinent matters that we can address, there's certain matters that we cannot address that are the purview of the court system, the civil court system, the criminal court system, many other places in this world, the county, but we, our powers are limited to Town of St. John in 2020, and I think it's really important for us to stick to that, and I know that in the past there's been, you know, feedback both ways, well, people should be able to talk, people shouldn't be able to talk, but I think it's really important to stay on point, so I respectfully just wanted to bring that, that forward.
Okay. Thank you. Brian, anything?
No, I believe we're finished.
Beth?
No, sir.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Blazak, thank you, Mr. Pondinas, roll call, please.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Panzik?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swet?
Yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.